I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to amend the agenda under good faith out of seven four dash two oh four C. We need to talk about the ARPA funds. The accountant said that we need, we have to have it figured out by December thirty first. So we should probably at least talk about it tonight so then we can.
Make a decision on that next meeting?
Or even make a decision tonight, but we at least need to talk about it so we have time to think about it before or tonight before December thirty first.
So you did find a total amount that we have?
Oh, I have, yeah, I have a lot of information on that.
Yeah, I'm motion to amend the agenda, yes.
A second.
I move to accept the results of the county of amassing election results from November thirteenth at five P M.
One second.
Where do we want to put, we want to put the ARPA funds at number eight point five? Do we want to do it four point five or would we want to do three point five? Anybody care?
I don't care, you can go ahead and ask him.
Let's just do the ARPA funds next, I suppose. Are you ready Cindy?
I am ready. So we have, the way that it was set up prior, we did two different funds. So there's fund ten and fund thirty. When Tony, our auditor called the other day, he enlightened me very much. So one of the things that this money actually has to be obligated. So it can't just be a bid or we're going to talk about putting it somewhere. It actually has to be obligated and in his preference spent is, was his words. He said, in order to avoid all the complication, he highly recommends to fulfill our need through the federal government or state government, whoever, I think it was state funds, wasn't it? ARPA, was that federal or state?
I thought it was federal.
Okay, I just had a moment of, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
So in order to meet federal guidelines and our auditor guidelines, he recommends applying that money for salaries from January one through nine thirty of twenty twenty four. So it meets the physical year of our twenty twenty four. What that does then is the money will then be designated for salaries. So we can say, so when we go into the audit, it's a nice sweet clean audit. And then we are avoiding a lot of things like if we purchase something that's of value, then we're going into the whole asset and depreciation and that can complicate things with the audit. He said the most important thing is this fulfills the obligation. It shows the money was spent towards salaries and then that frees up that budget to purchase the items that we want to purchase. So we may have to come back into opening up the budget so we can then designate those funds. So you just have to remember the funds are already there. We don't want to pay them back. Pure and simple. This is the best way to make a clean audit and to make sure that everything's fulfilled through the government. And then we can still go through at a later date. And I mean, we can spend that money once we open it up, we can apply it to this year's physical year and then we can redesignate those funds. But we're going to keep them in the three funds, the general, sewer and water. Sanitation has extremely, well, it has a larger amount of money in there at this point. So we don't really need to add any more funds to that.
And so how much, how much total funds do we have?
So she had, we received in the ARPA fund ten, there were sixty four thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars that was designated to us or given to us and the same amount in fund thirty. We currently have used twenty four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty eight cents in fund ten ARPA. Remaining amount is forty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and thirty two cents. We used for D E Q, we did a wastewater collection system study and then we used it, went in with city of Kendrick for the sewer camera system. And so the remaining amount in that fund is forty six thousand, two hundred and ten. So we have eighty six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and thirty two cents remaining. Now, we did designate already in previous meetings that we were using for the Hallett street. It was approved in the meeting to pay PO asphalt. That, that amount was thirty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty. I can apply that still because that was still within the physical year of twenty twenty four and then use the remaining ARPA or we can use it for all for salary and then.
Pull the PO asphalt out of salaries later.
Yeah, basically I put it back in so as long as it stays within the funds. That's the most important thing, as long as I stay within the funds, that money could just go into pay for that.
And what's easier for you to do?
I'm gonna make sure Tony approves it before I, I think, I don't think it matters either way because it fulfills the obligation. It's just a matter of accounting then, just making sure that it works as long as it's.
As long as the funds match and everything you have.
Yep.
I have a question, so, probably two questions. So is the ARPA funds, is that where we talked about getting the generator and paying for the alleys? So under this scenario, we would designate for salaries and we would go back in because we did already vote for those things?
Yep.
And take those out of the general fund?
Well, no, we take them out of the three funds, so.
Whichever one they apply.
Yes, well, salary goes through four funds. So we, in order for accounting or for the audits, we take salaries from all four funds. We're avoiding sanitation because there's more money in that account. So why put more money into an account that you're already have surplus in where there's more of a need in the other three?
Sure, okay.
So essentially the money is already there. We're just allocating it to salaries. Therefore, we'll have to vote in to open it up just to take that money again and use it and then we can use it for the projects.
Okay.
And then that would give us like more time to get the bid for the trailer, get that figured out, get the alleys figured out.
That was the problem.
So I see.
Because they actually want to practically spend by December thirty first.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is a way to spend it, but also.
This is the way to keep it.
Keep it, yeah.
Keep it, this is the way to keep it, we don't have to pay it back and we're not losing anywhere we look at it and it gives us the time.
And we can, gives us time to still do the trailer and the alleys and.
So that makes practical sense, but as far as what we voted to spend, we, I think we said if there's anything left, we do the alleys. Can we dedicate ourselves now to doing those alleys?
Well, we already have thirty five fifty dedicated to O asphalt, is what she said. So what was the remaining?
Twenty seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
So that would give him forty seven thousand dollars to find a generator and a trailer.
Which we have a generator.
How we still have ten thousand for Clifford and the signs though.
So we're at thirty seven thousand. But I thought we were going to do, we have the generator, right?
Right.
So all we need is a trailer and what was the quote that you got on the trailer?
I haven't got a quote for a trailer yet.
I mean, I, and what were we, the alleys was, what did we figure it was going to cost for the alleys?
Basically just gravel, right? We're just going to be gravel.
So that's probably, seven thousand probably covered the alleys. So it'd still give us thirty thousand for the trailer, essentially.
Yeah, if we wanted to do that later, yeah.
So.
But the trailer comes before the gravel.
That's what we voted, yeah. But so we're looking pretty good, I mean, I don't know, was that thirty thousand in the ballpark, what type of trailer you would need for that generator?
I would say fifteen thousand for a trailer would be a lot.
Okay.
Because it's just, it's a regular enclosed trailer, then the electricians have to.
There is some electrical wiring connections they're going to have to hook up to it so that it can plug into different places. It won't just be.
And how big of a, how big of a trailer, like a five by six?
Well, it's, we were looking at it today, it's only eight feet long maybe.
So probably even like a, like seven by ten or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
So that, those trailers that I've seen, they're eight to ten, so that would still leave roughly twenty.
And that would cover alleys and whatever.
Well, no, that would leave twenty to wire the trailer and then we'd still have the seven thousand for the alleys.
Okay.
So I think with, I would, I would like to hope with twenty that they can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to, if we, as much as we can, stay committed to that.
Yeah, that's fine, I.
Why can't you look for a use of, use one?
Yeah, Cindy mentioned, you know what, her plan kind of was, Dan and I agreed that if it goes into salaries, then it can be just, the budgets just go back up by that amount, whatever the salary is that was paid. So then we can use that money for the trailer still or the well or whatever we want to, but we did obligate to the trailer.
Trailer and then I know we did talk about the alleys, yeah. But I don't, I think seven thousand definitely more than cover.
That's a lot of gravel, that's a lot of ground.
Yeah, but that would be nice to get them all, all done like you talked about.
For some reason, I have this itch in my head that when we add something to the agenda, are we for sure we can vote on it?
Well, I don't, I don't, we voted on the last thing.
It's a code.
Okay. It's a code.
That's seventy four two oh four is the only thing?
C, yeah.
I can go get the A.
And I mean.
I mean, I.
And we can even, we can even wait till, if you feel comfortable, we can wait till December to vote, we just wanted to definitely get the conversation going.
Okay, I didn't have, whatever, I mean, I just, I can't remember on top of my head about it, but I'm sure.
Either way, whatever we need to do.
Well, no, I like to back up my, what I say with documentation. So.
Would it be easier just to wait until December then? Is that, that's so funny?
We should have a better idea of the trailer.
Yeah, we can look at a trailer, I know somebody who would love to look at quotes on a trailer.
Just, I just, like I said, it's good to have the conversation about it so then we can not have to have the conversation in December and then call a special meeting. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with, so do we need to, do we need to move to just wait till December or just move on?
I don't think so.
Then we just move on?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're on to the website.
Okay, I was going to do a little bit of.
This is the website stuff, right?
Yep, yeah. So everybody's got, I think they're different.
It's not digital.
Everybody's got.
Everybody's got it now.
Right there, Chris Stocker, I didn't know if you had it or not.
Yep, so I've been talking to our web designer because I know nothing about websites. I don't know anything about anything. So she's, what? She was looking to help us figure out a host because that's what's wrong with our website. We need a new host because they're just, it's just sitting there, they won't do anything. So they're not helping us at all, so we need to go get somebody else to figure this out. But anyway, so she recommended Go Daddy and I haven't heard anything good about Go Daddy. So I contacted Teresa Stocker, she is local, she does websites, she does it all. But this is in the handout here. She says that she has a standard website hosting and prices go up. The standard one right here is what she was quoting me. Two hundred and twenty five per year, twenty one dollars a month. It's up to five thousand monthly visits, which I don't think we'll ever get that much. Oh, maybe, I don't know. Two hundred and fifty, I guess that's gigabyte bandwidth. I know nothing about the guts of stuff, so I'm just telling you. Thirty, thirty days worth of daily backup and an S L, SSL certificate. And it's also, there's, she has, let's see. She says, I also offer several monthly maintenance plans for WordPress sites that includes security monitoring, plugin, theme updates, content updates, monthly monitoring. That's a mid-level plan and it also includes the hosting. I mean, so she has quite a few plans and they're very, very reasonable. She does not recommend Go Daddy, she says it's terrible. And so Kim, who is our web designer, she gave me a cost for Go Daddy. It's three years of hosting would be, three years of hosting plus one year of S S L would be two hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty three cents. And Host Rocket is our current host and we're doing two forty four seventy five for two years. And there's also a transferring fee and to add a domain name, it would be ten bucks more. And then it would take her three hours at forty nine dollars per hour to set up the new account and move it. With Teresa's, she doesn't charge for the transferring. See, it says whichever, site, site migration is typically done at no charge. Anyway, that's what I have and also Kim is also looking into Amazon and Microsoft for hosts. But what did she say? She says, I work with Amazon hosting and they are awful. I've never worked with Microsoft, Microsoft for hosts, so she doesn't know anything about them. But anyway, that's, that's what I have.
So I remember back in the day, but when the people would, the businesses would use, it was called NetworkSolutions.com. I don't even know if they're still around, but I know that was like a really, so Go Daddy, a lot of times it seemed like was for like people's, you know, personal sites, some businesses, musicians, blah, blah, blah. But NetworkSolutions.com seemed like was, is what a lot of businesses would do. Now, I don't know a lot about it or why that would be different than Teresa's, but.
I do have a little email because I, like, I don't know anything about this, so, but she, because I'm like, I don't know what hosts are. So she wrote me an email telling me what, what is hosting? Web hosting is an online service that makes your website's content accessible on the internet. When you purchase a hosting plan, you are renting space on a physical server to store all the website's files and data. Web hosts provide the hosting technology and resources required for the effective and secure operation of your website. So these, a host has to provide the secure, so that we're not hacked in. Okay, they are responsible for keeping the server up and running, implementing hosting security measures and ensuring that data such as text, photos and other files are transferred successfully to the visitor's browsers.
So I wonder the five thousand, like, is this going to be enough for our minutes to be on there as well? So we don't, we have to.
Oh, yeah.
Four minutes and all that. And then I, I know also, I believe anyway, that Apple does something where we have the cloud. That might be worth checking in, like what Mark said, in Apple as well. Because I want to make sure that whatever we do, we should make sure that whatever we do, it's, we're not going to run into this problem and so long as that website is up.
The, you mean the Network Solutions?
No, 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 the one that we currently have before it got full. I don't think it's been.
I have no idea.
Doesn't seem like it's been that long, couple of years.
Oh, yeah, I do. And Kim went in and archived a bunch of stuff to give us more room and, and the host still isn't able to make it work.
Right.
So it says, no one online will be able to access your website, website until it is hosted on the server. So it's got to get hooked to our server somehow. I, I'm like, this is like way above, I don't know anything about websites.
Have you talked to, did you talk to B and I?
I did not, I, we were, that day, he was up here, we had a huge, I can call him though.
Because he, he's one of the managers of our server and all that, right?
Right, so I'll ask B and I if they have any suggestions.
It's good to know we have a local.
Oh, and she is awesome.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
She's awesome and that would be a real, I, I like it when I know I can call somebody and they can fix it. You know, she could come down, if something's really scurry, she could come and fix it. I mean, I know where to get her, I mean, I have a hard time getting to Amazon and they leave my package at somebody else's door.
So she offers her own host?
Yeah, she does the whole thing, but she does just hosts too. But she, she can do the whole package, but I'd kind of like to keep, this is just my opinion, Kim, at SurfSop as our designer because she's been so helpful to us and, I mean, she is, to me anyway, she's just been great, so I.
You know, it's kind of, when it's something like this or mechanicking and you don't really know it and you're like, you know, but at the same time, it'd be kind of nice to learn a little more about it.
Yes.
For, for me, for my own, like.
Yeah. Are you crazy?
So do we want to get more information or do we want to make a decision tonight?
I'm personally okay moving forward with Teresa. But I'm also okay with getting more information too.
So like these plans, so it would be the twenty one dollars per month and then we would have to pick one of these plans?
No, 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 that is one, that is a plan.
That is the plan she was recommending, that would be the basic of what we would need.
Yeah, but we can go up from there.
Oh, I see.
You can, yeah.
What are we currently paying?
We are currently paying Host Rocket two forty four seventy five.
That's what I thought you said and then it's, okay, and then, yeah. For two years.
For two years.
And then it goes up after that?
No, but she says there will also be a nominal charge for transferring your, so if you transfer it to, like she says Go Daddy, there's going to be a charge to do that where Teresa won't charge us.
Okay.
It's from the transfer.
So it sounds like it's, would be a lot cheaper anyway to transfer to Teresa and she's got everything we would need.
So Host Rocket is two forty four for two years?
Yeah.
And then, but Teresa's is two twenty five per year, am I missing that?
That's what I was just going to ask.
That's right.
Right.
So it would be more expensive to deal with Teresa, but we would not run out of room in three years? Or something is that over? But if we go to Go Daddy, then we're still paying Host Rocket to go to Go Daddy? Is that what it would be? Plus the hundred and fifty dollars to transfer?
It's going to be, okay, what is it?
Forty nine dollars an hour.
Okay, yeah, quarter.
Roughly a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and then, and the ten dollar per year for the, to add a domain name for privacy. And then the twelve and fifteen dollars for transferring it and let's see, Go Daddy, three years of hosting.
It would be a lot more cost with SurfSop and going into Go Daddy.
Yeah.
And like you said, having Teresa right here local, she can't fix it if there's anything going on. That's a benefit.
She's awesome too, I mean, that's just.
What have you guys found with either of us?
Well, it's almost double the cost, I don't think it hurt to learn more. Because it is almost double the cost and could be exactly what we need.
Well, I mean, we've only got a week, two weeks away and we can do the other meeting and find out, so.
Sure, no problem, so I'll, I'll keep trying to figure out what.
Is it possible to find out like what other, say municipalities our sites use? I mean.
Like maybe Deary or Troy.
We talked to Mobile, well, I guess we didn't, we just went on their site. We were just looking, we were kind of looking around, but that's another possibility I can absolutely check.
Yeah, I would check Deary, Troy, Tennessee, just to kind of, kind of see maybe what they use and if they're happy with their service.
Absolutely.
So because that's an action item, do we need to table it?
Yes, if you don't vote on it, it just goes away. Yeah.
Go ahead, you brought it up.
I move to table the website hosts until next month when we get more information.
A second.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
We're on to Cindy Europe.
So we have four CDs through P one F C U that are expiring or maturing, excuse me, wrong terminology, twelve fifteen and twenty twenty four. Our current interest rates for all four of these accounts is four point six seven. I have, I would, I would like to make a suggestion to have these all cashed out and put into an L G I P account through our state treasury's office because their current rate is five point zero two, so it's a higher interest rate. So I would just need, if you guys do decide that that's what you want to do, then have the minutes reflect that I do have permission to go ahead and close these out and request to have all the funds put into an L G I P account.
So I just have one quick question because I'm not, I know we've talked about the L G I P before. So if we were in an emergency situation, how difficult is it?
I can have the funds within twenty four hours.
Okay.
Next business day, honestly.
Okay.
So, where are you going?
Yeah, boy.
Okay, so the difference between the CDs and the L G I P. So what, like, what, what's this, to your knowledge, what are the CDs in? Who, like, who manages those versus the L G I P?
So a bank manages the CDs. We're investing to a bank essentially in a CD and then they hold those until maturity. You cannot cash them out or there's a penalty, you lose money. It's a lower interest rate. L G I P is through our state treasury's office. To me, our state of Idaho is one of the most secure states you could be in. Our governor has done a really excellent job of safeguarding our money. And the interest rate at five percent is higher than you're going to get anywhere else. So to me, for security, you know, easy access and having more money, you know, it produces more money for the city. I think it's a better investment.
So it's just a bank, private bank versus the government's?
And you have to remember, everything is under the Federal Reserve. I mean, everything's managed federally. It's just really is going to come down to how much more money are you going to get? I personally, and the next item we'll be talking about, there's twenty one accounts to manage. It's a lot more difficult to manage all of these accounts. L G I P, it pays a higher interest rate and really the more funds we put into those accounts, the higher the return is. These are all divided up and CDs can only be in a certain limit. Whereas an L G I P, I can put as much money as we have available to put into that account. Again, making that interest rate's a lot more, at a higher rate and better return.
And it's, it's pretty fairly like low risk because we're, Idaho's such a good, good spot.
Yes, our state treasury's department is very, very secure, yes. They're not out there playing with our money.
Okay, okay, you guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize Cindy to move the, cash out the matured CDs and transfer them into the L G I P account.
A second.
No, we're on this. No, we're on the twenty one accounts.
Number six.
We're on number six, we just passed number five. You're up again Cindy.
So I spoke with our auditor the other day, well, about a lot of things. He's my new friend. We discussed these twenty one accounts and I just asked him, how would this impact us going into our audit? He said it does not impact us at all and he agrees with me, we only need two to three accounts. The only time, if we have a levy or a bond, sometimes the criteria in those, those types of loans or whatever that we have, we have to sometimes have a separate bank account that always shows a certain amount of money in it. That's the only time you would ever really want to have its own separate account with nothing else in it. Right now, we have all of these different accounts making less interest in, you know, money than they should be making and it makes it a complete nightmare to try to reconcile every single. and it makes it a complete nightmare to try to reconcile every single one of those.
So when you're saying accounts, are you talking basic checking savings accounts?
No, accounts, everything from a CD, so I reconcile everything.
Okay.
All the CD accounts, so these are some, these are four that we just wanted.
And do you know why we have so many?
I do not, I do not.
And do you have a record of when all these were created, as far as like?
I can always get that information, I have not, um, I didn't have a book that, when that was, when any of them were created.
So we did have the bond election for the wastewater treatment plan. So do we have to, will we still have a separate one for that, or do we need a separate one for that? Because we did pass that, it's been a few years.
Yes, so if, if there's anything with that criteria in that account, they'll not be closed. But I have nine LGIP accounts. Those accounts, at this point, could all be combined together along with this money from the CD, and we would, you know, earn that much more interest. So it's those types of things that I'm struggling with a little bit. Um, I mean, so we have, like, Top Credit Union, we have money in it, we have credit, we have money at LCCU, a couple of CDs there. We have money, we have three Wells Fargo accounts, and then the rest for all these LGIP accounts. So to me, it would just make more sense and more profitable for the city, and to me, it's also a, a secure, it's more secure to have a couple of accounts that you were having an auditor go through than to have twenty-one accounts for an auditor to try to figure out what all these transactions.
Yeah, I just don't understand what the point would have been to have so many.
Yeah, when you go twenty-one to two, that's like pretty extreme.
I know, and I'm just gonna say this, I know from some people's perspective, when it comes to accounting, like, at a home budget, I'm gonna set up the savings account for this because I'm saving it for this, I'm gonna set this up for this because I'm saving it for this. But when you're dealing with business and organizations, you stay within your budget. It's not about having more accounts to stay within your budget, you stay within your budget that is set up through the city, and that's how you manage your money. So I, I don't know if maybe that's what somebody prior, you know, people, who knows how long this has been going on? This could be a long, long period of time, um, if they thought that that was a good idea, I don't know.
I think the public would be more trusting too, in a way, you know, twenty-one accounts, like, really.
Yeah, it's, no, that's a red flag, you're like, why?
Money in one pot instead of.
Well, it wouldn't seem like we're always trying to make decisions about transferring something over as it matured. It wouldn't seem like we're always doing that.
Yeah, yeah, and it gets.
I'm good with doing that, doing what you need to do to break it down, and, yeah.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize Cindy to take, to condense the twenty-one accounts to the two or three that is needed.
Call second.
In favor, gases.
Thank you.
Hello, we have.
Hello, so, um, the Christmas lighting I put on here, just kind of as a quickie emergency thing. Um, I've been approached at Halloween about lighting, uh, lights for State Street. People were really in the Halloween spirit, and so we were talking about having a contest next year for Halloween, and on State Street and through town, and then this, but someone contacted me after Halloween, said, well, why don't we do, why don't we have a contest for Christmas? As well, there's still time, and I said, okay. So I pledged a hundred dollars out of my own, out of the council money, and the Juilliard Community Movement Association has put up a hundred dollars for a prize. And I asked Cindy, and I mentioned it to Wendy about if the city would like to donate a hundred dollars from the Christmas Light Fund, that would give us a three hundred dollar prize pool, a grand prize of two hundred, and a runner-up of one hundred. I found three judges, Christine from the BlackBerry, Erin from the library, and Misty from the store jumped on it, and would like to do that this Saturday right before Christmas, and then we'd like to just give the winner a gift card. So I guess what I'm asking is if the city would approve the additional hundred dollars to have the Christmas Light budget for, uh, a sponsorship, and it can go on the city Facebook page and the JCI page, you know, saying, hey, we're sponsoring this this year.
I love it, I think the city needs that great positive positivity.
Just sort of uplift people and.
Well, like it's in a vault.
I agree, but unfortunately, it does not stay out of time.
Oh, so you can.
So we'll have to vote on it in December, so.
I didn't show you the money, so.
We just, we could, yeah, I mean, at least that we know about it, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and advertise it, that we're just giving prizes, I'm not gonna say how much, but we're gonna give a prize for the best lights, best theme lights.
Yeah, and then just bring it up and.
And we'll do it, we'll vote on it on the, at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Did you have any?
It's okay, it's funny.
So, okay, you said that you started out, looked at it, it was on State Street, this is the main community.
This is all town, only Juilliard, all residents, except I'm, I'm omitted from it. I'm not, my lights are not gonna count.
So.
That intrigues me about your lights aren't gonna count, are you going something special? Sorry, Mark, personally.
Oh, no, but I just.
He's sending it.
Ah, gotcha.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna be.
It'll come, look very interesting.
Right.
Um, okay, so we have, we rate, did we raise our light to six by six thousand dollars or something like that?
Well, you know what's in the fund, is what you're asking.
Yeah, no, I, I think we did raise it, by the way.
Well, there's quite a bunch of money, and Joe and I haven't bought any lights this year yet. We were looking at just a few little things. We, today, we got all the Christmas bulbs and all the regular stuff put in. We're putting that up tomorrow, and we've got the lights for across the streets, we've got the snowmen, we've got the base lights. So the only other light purchase would, would be if Dick or anybody else bought some for the park. So I think we'd be well under budget, you know.
Well, I thought we were gonna do update some more of the, uh, things on the light posts too this year.
We were, we were. I didn't, I didn't have a chance to look through catalogs this summer, because that's when you have to do it, is in the summer. But we are looking at Home Depot, there's a couple, uh, there's a snowman, three snowmen on top of each other. That's one that would go on a light pole, there's that one, and I told Joe if there's any elements he gets, that were cool or that he liked that we could give him, they're not, they're only under twenty bucks, they're not that much.
Well, when we were getting lights for the park, we, uh, did a lot of business with Moscow Building Supply.
Oh, okay.
So I would check there as well. That's where, like, those new, the new long-stream ones, they were from Moscow Building Supply.
And I'm not saying it has to come out of the Christmas Light money, it could come out of some other fund, general, I don't know. I'm just saying that a hundred dollars, you know, that we can, if the city sponsors it, then we can advertise it and.
But just to clarify, so we, we raised it pretty significantly, but we're not going that route as of right now with, with the amount of money you raised?
There's not the volunteers to put up lights, I mean, we're, JCI is volunteering to put up the lights we have, and maybe put five other strand or two or something, but.
But the updating though, that.
But the updating, I didn't, um, have a chance to look through catalogs, and I don't wanna be the one to decide. I didn't wanna be the one, I'd rather have a committee of citizens or council members or somebody pick a style or a theme or, or something.
Would you like to take that on?
Because, because I was busy doing.
To be.
Sure, I understand that, I'm, I'm just, I just, I'm looking at it like, I feel like we raised the money, and I realize things got thrown away, but we raised them, we, we raised it quite a bit.
We did, and, but what about, like, through, through the year, they purchased up for next year, and we're still using the budget.
We have to use it until we.
For next October.
So we could buy it this summer or next year, but I would still check, but I, just to thought, yeah.
I mean, even they purchase some things now.
Sure, I just.
Right, I see what you're saying.
I would prefer when we tell the public, was, because we were pretty draconian with the budget.
Do you know what's, what it is or anything?
No, but I would like to, may I kind of bring something up real quick? The fiscal year ended September thirtieth, so the money that you increased is for this year, FY twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So we have now to next, end of next September to use it.
Yeah, so you have to kind of.
That's what I'm saying, so if we, if you purchase some now for this Christmas, we are certain.
So within our yearly budget that you raised in, or increased the budget.
So it doesn't affect the increase?
No, so that's why I said we used a little bit now, but they purchased up throughout the year from next year, then, then they're ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, no.
So if you go to Moscow, just check Moscow Buildings Supply, see what they have, and then maybe you or Joe could present.
And you're gonna get better prices after the holidays.
Right, but if you, well, and if there's any left, if you see something that you guys might want for this year, just if you want council to look at it, just present it at the next meeting, but.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
I'm pretty sure that anything Christmasy, we would be, you know.
I thought there was a plan, but maybe there is.
Well, there's, well, I think there is a plan to update this, there was, we talked about updating the light posts.
Yeah, light posts, the.
But we still have this summer to order.
Former people that were very excited about it, we were gone the whole about it, but I didn't move forward with it because I was busy doing other things, and I, I didn't, I don't know what people have in mind. Yeah, I don't know what people have in mind exactly, I kinda like Spokane or Moscow, where they have those big, huge, you know, swags on the street, with lights and all that kind of stuff, but that might not be someone else's idea.
Well, is there a catalog, is there a catalog or a website that goes to?
There is.
Because I would love to look at it.
Yeah, maybe send us the link of the.
Maybe Wendy would like to, if you're in that.
I would, I have plenty of time.
Well, you're the blow-up person.
Is your camera on, please? Yeah, the next morning, it looks like somebody's driving by shooting her off the end of their head.
Just wait, just to the post office this year, it's. No, I would totally do that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, I think the townwide thing is a great idea.
I do too.
I think that, um, looking forward to, like, what, if there's some small things we can get this year, and then looking in the summer, getting stuff for next year, still spending the money where we appropriated.
You know what, I don't wanna be, I'm not gonna be involved in it because I'm a council member, but I would also donate a hundred dollars.
Okay. I, it wasn't, just so you guys know, it was citizens' idea, uh, it wasn't something I cooked up out of my own brain. It was, I don't, the KJ seven used to do it for both cities, but then they kind of went doing it.
I was watching the Halloween one, and that was from between that block, how they were doing it, so.
It's that block.
It was that block, so.
It's that block that's trying to get something going, so.
I'll donate a hundred.
Randy and I will donate a hundred as well.
So who are the judges?
Oh, Mark, come on.
I don't want to honor them.
So maybe, so the city does a hundred, we have to find for the bucks.
Wow, that'd be great.
I have a suggestion.
Oh, you're donating?
No. If you guys need to do a gift card, do it local.
Yes, yes.
That one, that's.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Like the grocery store or something that's become big.
The pizza bank.
Yeah, or the pizza bank.
Pizza bank, yes, something, yeah.
I was thinking the big one, like grocery or something.
Well, and you could break it, bring that amount up into different, different amounts, like one for the brewery, one for the pizza bank. And I mean, you could, you know, so that one prize could be three different gift cards, I think you would have that amount.
Well, if we get up to five hundred, we can add another extra two, two, we have a grand prize, first, second, third.
Yeah, runner-up, yeah.
So you have judges already, you said?
Well, Christine broke her ankle, I guess, the day I asked her, she got overcome her ankle. So I assume, she said she's, well, I know she canceled all of her appointments and everything for two months, but I'm hoping she'll be able to do it on the twenty-first, yeah.
Yeah.
And then Erin at the library, and Misty at the store, and she's one of the ones on State Street that.
Sure she doesn't wanna be involved with it rather than be a judge?
Well, I'll ask her, if there's a conflict, if she wants to be in the competition, we'll, you can judge.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I know my blow-ups.
All right, well, I appreciate you pretty much.
I, I, and I apologize, Justin, for not being an action item, I'm sorry.
Well, it sounds like it's gonna happen no matter what, we'll make a motion on it next time.
So I guess it's confusing because it's in the, I mean, it's in the budget technically, but I wanted to include city council.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's, so, I mean, it's, and I'm authorized to spend money under five thousand without a bit, but.
Right.
What I'm saying is I wanted to include it, but.
Yeah, no, I think it's awesome.
And you go with agenda four again.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job, Justin.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great job.
And nicely done, community members for bringing that up.
And good suggestion from Mr. McGal about the local.
Yes.
So we on to the wastewater.
Yeah, um, I got a new, um, updated timeframe from Stillman. So we've already did the pre-bid meeting, and now we have a lot of contractors here, so I don't know if that's good or bad. But we did have some vendors. So the new timeframe, December nineteenth will be the bid opening, between, uh, December twenty-third and January third, special council, city council meeting, we'll, we'll have to have one. Notice, for the notice of award approval and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements upon funding agency.
What was the dates for the?
December twenty-third to January thirty?
Yeah, whichever, you know, it is, we need to decide when we wanna have a special council meeting for that. Our next regular meeting is December tenth, so.
Totally Monday.
So he says we can combine these, worst-case scenario, we will wait till January fourteenth to do this. So this is kind of still up in the air. January thirteenth, notice to proceed, April eighth, substantial completion, and May eighth, final completion. So I just wanted to give everybody a handout to, just to, so you know about the changed timeframe.
Just to add to that, they had the, the pre-construction meeting for the contractors here Monday, and this room was standard only.
I had people coming here going, what in the heck is going on there?
It was unbelievable, but only, it was only six general contractors, which is good. Still was hoping for a few more generals, but there was tons of subcontractors. Uh, Cheryl Williams was here for, for painting, and all kinds, Phil, I, it was, so they're expecting a really good response. Uh, the contractors did ask for extra time, an extra week to get their bids in order, and then they all went down to her, the plant, to see what was on the bill, so.
That's cool.
It was very, very cool.
Is that it, Melba?
That's all I got.
Uh, so I move to go into a secondary session, kind of code seven four dash two oh six, two oh six, subsection one. Local vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.